Good morning, everyone. Shall we rise for the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Morning, everyone. We haven't heard from Sunny, but I know there's been some illness, so we're just going to hopefully assume that it's just something minor. Why Sunny's not here. We're going to start by the minutes of our Board of Selectmen's meeting held on January twenty-fifth. Could I have a motion?
Hold on, twenty-second.
I'm sorry, twenty-second.
I'll make the motion.
And I'll second it.
Looking at the twenty-five. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Very none. Under new business, we're going to start with twenty-twenty-five deliberative session review.
This year, at the deliberative session, we made no amendments to the budget or any of the Warren articles. So plus, plus, no changes. So it goes on the ballot as is.
Alright.
And I think we had good staff, probably about sixty in attendance. So the turnout was quite well. Pudgy faces I saw this year than we had in the past.
Yes.
And voters guys are available on our website, and I do have some here if anyone wants to crowd a few. And for you guys, I know you guys like to take us back as well.
Alright, awesome. I think it went fairly well. About the same amount of time as typically it's been for the last few years, so. Anybody have any comments?
I think it went good. I think it was good discussion.
Yep, yes, when there was discussion, I think it was good. You're exactly right. Good, awesome. Okay, move on to the cemetery trustees alternate appointment request. Okay, we have a motion to approve a Kate Eaton, E-A-T-O-N?
Yes, the cemetery trustees have put forward two nominations that they would like to consider to appoint as alternates. Kate Eaton and Barbara Burnett.
Turn the page over. Okay. Alright, so we need a motion for each.
The only thing with these two, just as a note, that they're just filling in the last month of this year, and that the paperwork will come back for them in March for the full year. This is just to finish out. Barbara would finish out Norma's term. Norma had to resign. And then Katie would take Kevin Sturgeon's spot.
Okay, alright. Could I have a motion for those?
I'll make a motion to appoint Katie Eaton as an alternate to cemetery trustees with a term expiring March of twenty-five. I'll make a second item on that motion to approve the appointment of Barbara Burnett as an alternate to the cemetery trustees with a term expiring March twenty-five.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Very none. That moves forward. Twenty-twenty-four update on the hazardous mitigation plan approval.
I didn't print them out because it was in excess of a hundred pages long. I did forward everyone the PDF of the finished product of the hazard mitigation plan. All that will be inserted into that as your motion to approve it as presented today. Deb is here to speak to it. If you have any questions from her.
And I'm sure everyone read that book.
Every single page.
Every page, and you understand it all, and there's no, there's any comment or any questions for the chief?
Looked good.
Okay?
That was easy. It's just that form, that one page they have to sign, and I sent that back in, and we've already gotten the grant money back for it.
Okay, alright.
I don't think it's a hard place to question.
I guess, I guess there's no questions in regards to that. They, they read it thoroughly. And can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the updated twenty-twenty-four hazardous mitigation plan as prepared in accordance with the Disaster Mitigation Act of two thousand, section three twenty-two, mitigation planning.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any objection? No, they read it so thoroughly, there's no objection either.
If you would like a formal printed copy, just let me know in like maybe one month. It's been as formal capacity, but I think as part of the funding is for them to print it, so I didn't want to waste my ink and paper.
There you go. Okay, alright. No problem. Just let Alicia know if you would like a official copy of that, okay?
And there's, there'll always be an official copy in my office.
And I'm sure Deb will, I'm sure, I'm sure Deb will have one.
I'll have a couple extra if you'd like to come over and read them.
And sit there and read them? Oh, they don't need to, they read them all.
They don't need to read them all.
Okay. Fire chief, comfort dog request. We go from, we go from.
This is not what I'm requesting, even though it's a nice dog. So I've, I've kind of gotten together already with Board of Selectmen on this before I kind of pursued anything more. I didn't want to do too much, I didn't want to say too much work on this without getting some input from them and how the Board of Selectmen felt on doing this. I was approached by this woman, Claire, a couple of weeks ago, and she actually had talked to Evan, our Lieutenant of Landure, and he pointed her in my direction, because they are police right now, and she's still trying to work on getting their own working K-9, police canine. But we got talking, and I've talked to lieutenant, I've talked to the captain, about having one in the fire department. We're right now working on getting this all through donations. I don't know if you read the memo I sent you guys. So there really should be no funding, there should be no, it's gonna be really, there should be no funding to this whole project.
No expense to the taxpayers.
To the taxpayers, correct. That's what I'm saying.
That's what you're saying.
Kind of like that Quinn.
Yeah.
Little group that I joke. So anyways, I would like to pursue getting a working canine, getting a comfort dog. This dog would pretty much, she or he or she would live with me. I would be the handler. Come to work with me every day, if needed by the police, if for whatever something they have going on, I'd be able to come in, work with them, do whatever they need to do. I do have a whole list of things that comfort dogs do, too. I did bring a comfort dog. Maybe she'll talk to you, I don't know. But I brought Lenny from the police department in Concord, who has Liberty. Liberty is the first comfort dog in the state of New Hampshire. So that's kind of what you get. So Lenny, if I explain to you a lot more of what he's been doing, the biggest, so right now, we have really no comfort dogs north of here. There is one in Camden. Every other comfort dog, uh, twenty-five comfort dogs, you said?
There's thirty-five in New Hampshire now.
Thirty-five.
Yeah.
But they're all in the southern parts.
And those are all with fire departments? No, you're with the police departments.
Only police departments.
Oh, the only police departments, okay.
So most of the fire departments have them out south. I actually reached out to a bunch of people through some fire department things that I'm on, and found out that they're, they're south, they're west. I do have someone from Los Angeles Fire Department that's supposed to be sending me some paperwork on hurt comfort dogs. Florida's big into the, to the fire departments, big into having those. And I would like to pursue Belmont being the first police, uh, fire department to have a comfort dog in the area. That would be working for this town. And not only with tools, with the town office, when they're stressed out down there, we could visit.
I imagine I thought my office could use a comfort dog as well.
So anyways, I'll, I'll let Lenny kind of give you a quick one down, exactly, what he does with, with Liberty, if you'd like.
So just so everybody knows, it's National Read Allowed Day. And I only know this because Liberty, we get called by all the schools and say, can you come to the school and read to us today? So today after we leave here, we'll be going to a couple of schools in Concord to read. So the idea for the comfort dog happened about nine years ago. The chief of police in Concord was at a NAMI meeting, National Alliance of Mental Illness, and a client from NAMI stood up and said, hey, if I'm having a breakdown, or I'm having just a bad day, do you guys have a dog that could bring to her? And the chief thought he, she was talking about like a patrol dog. And he said, no, no, we, we, we don't have that. So basically, he come back to the PD, and instead of just forgetting what they said, we started looking into it. And we found a dog in Hawthorne, California, Police Department in Hawthorne, California. At the time, that was the only one we could find. There was one in Massachusetts. It's a Saint Bernard that was owned by a police officer that he used to bring to different events. In fact, he went down to Sandy Hook when Sandy Hook happened with the dog. And he got, it was pretty, kind of a pretty famous thing, so. So we, I called the lady who owned, who places dogs with people who have PTSD, and she said, can we meet and talk about this? I'm like, sure. So we actually met her the next day with the chief of police. And so that's where the idea for Liberty came from. Since we've got Liberty, there's, like I said, thirty-five. Both state prisons have one for their staff. Rockham County Jail just got one like about a week ago for their staff. The nine-one-one center in Concord, who does nine-one-one for the entire state, got one probably a couple of months ago. UNH has two. We were talking, I think the college has one. So it's really something that's really, really taken off. There was one at Yukon. Her name is Tildy, and Tildy just retired probably about a week ago. Now there's another one down in Yukon. So Tildy came about the same time that Liberty came to work, so. The things we do, so one of the big things we do is we belong to the Southern New Hampshire SISM team. The SISM team is crisis.
Intervention.
Trust me, yeah, crisis, yeah, so isn't that bad? So basically, what we do is we go to training, and it's police-fire. Last year, the legislative, there's a legislate, there's a law in New Hampshire that covers SISM teams. And last year, they added emergency room nurses into the, the SISM team. And all it is, is peer-to-peer counseling. So we learn to do one-on-one peer-to-peer counseling with firefighter or a police officer. But we also do group debriefs. So if there's a traumatic event, like for example, I don't know, you guys, in Wolfboro last year, there was a boy who hit another boy on a jet ski and killed the other kid. So we went up and did that debrief for the fire department and police department. We include dispatchers and everything. So we sit in a circle, there's four questions that are asked, everybody answers the questions. And that's really, really all it is. It's about talking about the traumatic event. And the Southern New Hampshire SISM team, which is mostly from Concord down south, Salem, Nashua, Manchester, the seacoast is starting their own now, the Lakes Region has their own team that's beginning to start up now, too. But in the Southern New Hampshire team, we do not do a debrief unless we have a dog in it, too. So, because they make such a big difference.
So I understand that you were in Andover for the, just a couple of weeks ago, wasn't, was it? Was it Andover, the school?
The school, yeah, yeah, yeah. They had a child that passed away in a car accident in Andover. So we'll use it, as soon as that happens, it's, it's, it's such a good thing now, it's sad that we have to do that. But it's such a good thing, because we went to Goffstown, we've been to, uh, Bo, Bo had two kids killed in a car accident. And we'll get a call even the night before. We're like way up on the emergency list, and we'll get a call. We get a call from the D-BAR people for the shooting at the state hospital, even though we were kind of there because it happened in Concord. And they're like, we had like ten dogs that showed up every day at the state hospital, all police dogs and stuff. So we do that. Another big thing we do is we work at the Child Advocacy Center. So example, today at, I think, four o'clock, we have an interview with a child who was abused. So they do the forensic interviewing. So we're with the child before the forensic interviewing, and we're there as the child gets out of their forensic interview. We've been to the, the one in Laconia a couple of times, the Belmont County Child Advocacy Center. So we've been to court a couple of times. We can't go in the courtroom yet. We'd love to be able to, we haven't been in yet. But we're with the victim before, and we're with, with the victim right after they come out. We just did a big court case in Concord where a foreign exchange student from Spain was abused when she was here. It went to court, her, her abuser was found guilty. But we hung out with mom, dad, they were from Spain, and this, this young lady that was from Spain. And they wrote a letter to the chief of police saying they were gonna go home and they were gonna get a dog and name it Liberty. So it, it's, it's amazing. She walks into a room, she changes the entire room. And part of our research, too, what we found out was that out west, it's fire departments who have the dogs. And mostly in the east coast, except for Florida, Florida, Florida has them all over. They're really big into it. Then it's the police departments mostly in the east. But out west, it's mostly fire departments.
So I assume the dog stays with you all the time?
She, she's actually owned by the city. And that's liability reasons, because our primex basically, you know, covers her and stuff like that. And when she retires, I will have to buy her from the town to keep her. She stays with me, but there is somebody at the PD, if I go on vacation, that takes her. He loves to go, she loves to go to his house, because he lets her go on the furniture and do all the things she can't do at home, so. But, so, so we have that. And honestly, she's never, ever cost the taxpayers of Concord a dime. We had a donation when we got her. We started a nonprofit. And we've raised enough money now that we're going to be getting, it's going into the budget hopefully this year, a patrol dog for the city of Concord. And we haven't had one for a long time in Concord, so. Yeah. Ag, Agley? Osborne's Agley does her food. Tractor Supply will also do food for, for, for working dogs. Dr. Mara, he's a vet in Chichester, he does everything for her for free. He actually carries like an insurance on her. He pays for it, he, you know, I don't know if that's, but that's, that's how, that's how.
Of course, everybody has their way of giving back.
Yeah, yeah. And then we had a couple people come to us that wanted to do her grooming and stuff. So we, we basically picked one, and all the grooming is done for free. Although she's a lab, she really is a lot.
And are they typically labs? No, they?
Most of, most of them are labs.
Are they mostly labs?
Like I said, there was a Saint Bernard in Massachusetts. Natick and Fall River now. I just, I just, yeah, Fall River has one, Natick has one. I'm not sure which one has the Dalmatian. One of them has the Dalmatian. Masked Police has two. Yeah, they're, they're, but they're almost always, but when we went to, we went to a class down in Florida, because we wanted to see how they were using them in the Child Advocacy Center about the interviews and stuff. So we went down to this class, and the place down there places the dogs. And at first, when we were first down there, they wouldn't do anything over thirty pounds as a comfort dog. They've since changed. They do a lot of comfort dogs for Chicago, for Cook County, out in Illinois. So it can be, yeah, we've seen every kind of dog. So you saw French, little French Bulldog?
The college has a poodle.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah. You'll have to look it up, because his name is Gary.
Gary?
And he looks like a poodle.
And I actually trained with Gary.
Yeah.
When he was going through the stuff and ready for there, because I worked with his trainer.
I guess my only, my only question after we had talked and everything is that I just know how busy we, the fire department is. I know how busy the fire department is. And so my only concern is, is that you take on the dog, which, you know, obviously, that's your choice. Is it, you know, where the fire department's so busy, how are you gonna juggle training, classes, whatever, with your typical, you know, schedule, I guess, for lack of knowing what else?
Uh, I mean, even now, I've been doing training with just other things, too. So I, I mean, I could even, you know, most of my tra, and obviously firefighting training's never finished.
Right, it's ongoing, no matter what, right.
I would just include just a little bit different training. And with training, I do have, I'm here for dogs on it, am I saying it right? Who has offered her services.
Okay.
Train a dog.
Okay.
Which is actually a huge expense.
Yeah, yes.
It's all my dogs.
Because obviously, training the dog is one thing, but the handler, nothing, you know, it's a combination.
And I joke that when I took my dog to, to training, that I learned a lot.
Yep.
Yeah.
My dog ran through a bombing. It was me that stumbled through.
And, and a lot of cases.
Yeah, and I've been training dogs forever, so that's kind of why I'm, when it was brought to my attention on doing this, I'm like, this wouldn't really be a bad gig to, to work on. And I think it would be a great opportunity for the town of Belmont. Not only for the schools, because the things that he talked about with the indoor situation, you and I talked about. We have had those here. We've had plenty of them. I've been on the calls in general before they have affected the school. So I think this would be a great thing for them. I think even just, I'm in the town hall every day, you know, just as I come into town hall, I'm beheading through the dog. Whenever I'm visiting with Alicia, you know, letting him, her, whoever, go meet everybody else.
How old is Liberty?
She'll be seven now.
Okay.
Yeah. We got her, so we met her when she was eight weeks, and then she trained.
Sure.
And she started, she got sworn in when she was eleven months old. So, and Liberty was a rescue, so she got rescued with three sisters. And the trainer picked her to be the one that was going to do the comfort dog thing. And her three sisters went off and lived with somebody else, but.
And then my other question that I've already asked, but I'm gonna ask it again, because I want it on record, okay? Was that I had brought up the fact that we know that you have discussed retirement.
Yes.
Okay. And so we commit to this, alright, as a board, and, and you're committing to it. But yet, you know, a year from now, you decide that you're gonna retire. What happens with the dog?
And like I said, you and I kind of discussed it, and I could continue being the, I mean, I'm still gonna be a paramedic, no matter what. And I'll never give up the day I die, because it's hard to get.
Yeah.
So, you know, I can still be part of this department, a part of this town, and working with, you know, I mean, you're, are you full-time?
No, I, I, so I retired, and I work in the community service unit. And I know Chief Lewandowski just said that that's what he's gonna do as part of his retirement, too, with doing the community service stuff. So I, I, I do a lot. I deliver subpoenas, I direct traffic. But we a lot, do a lot of the community service events, too, so. And you're gonna, they're gonna pop up, because what's gonna happen, and what we've seen like with Goffstown and stuff, is that we will go down and visit, they'll call us down like Goffstown. And Goffstown, the kids at Goffstown High School talk about their therapy dog, because they have, they have a comfort dog down there. So the town will take ownership of the dog. You know, so, and that's a, that's a good thing. If, if you hear them talking about our comfort dog, I think that's, you've got it, you own it, that's, that's a good thing.
Sure. Yes.
Will the dog be donated at first, or do we have to purchase it?
No, we are, that's, I brought Claire. I'm gonna, I'm gonna be donating for the cost of the dog.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the funds for food, vet, all that, will you be collecting donations? Or will you be expecting the town to create a bank account?
I am, my first goal, once I kind of get things set here, and Lenny talked about it, was going to Osborne's, going to Tractor Supply, going to my vet, and working on getting places that will donate. He said he has no expenses for his food, his vet, or anything like that. So before, before that, I will be pursuing that. I've kind of, I kind of started this out slow. My biggest thing was wanting the Board of Selectmen, just to see if, you know, just give me a quick conversation about this, to say, hey, is this something you'll even entertain? Because I don't want to go too deep in this and bring people in on their days off to pursue this. So now, I want, I will, if, if things go forward, I will then pursue the rest of it. There are things that he set up a nonprofit.
Well, he did nonprofits for the Attorney General's Office.
For donations and stuff like that.
And you guys can have that paper, you could copy it, because that's what everybody else has done, too.
Really?
They took our paper from the nonprofit, and they started their own profit.
Can I touch on that nonprofit part real quick?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think if we do set a nonprofit, it'd probably be smart to just do it for Belmont dogs in general, since we are.
Yes, that's what we did.
Since we're trying to get canine.
That's exactly what we did. It's, it's Concord, canine, something, it's, and that's where our Facebook page is, and like our Instagram, too, and I just want to touch on that really quick, too, is, is you're gonna be the first fire department. So to put that on social media and stuff, you're gonna get, that's gonna be huge. So there was a swearing in of a puppy down in Massachusetts, and they couldn't wake the puppy up. I don't know if anybody ever saw the video, but he's laying on the chief's desk, and they're trying to wake him up, that he was swearing in. The dog wouldn't wake up. It got like over two million views on it.
Oh, yeah, anything to do, yeah.
I mean, they got a car donated from that, that video. They went to their car thing. They got a car donated for the dog. It was, it was just, it was crazy. Yeah, yeah.
You may, I think you've kind of answered some of my questions, but it sounds like you travel around the state. But it sounds like you're retired, so that kind of your job is to kind of travel a lot. Are you looking to separate yourself a lot more, to go to all these things that this gentleman does? Who would be paying for that?
I'm not looking to separate.
Taking away from Belmont residents.
I am not looking to separate from the town, I'm not looking to separate from Belmont residents. It would probably be above and beyond. I mean, right now, I work above and beyond what my scheduled time is anyways, doing stuff. So maybe instead of doing some paperwork I sit home and do, I'll just do that at work, and I'll do dog stuff on the other times. I probably, this, you know, just for myself, to stay ahead, I put in sixty-plus hours a week. So it may just stray a little bit more from just doing my work at work. And this part would be something for the town.
No, obviously, the town has to carry the insurance, so we'll have to check on what, and we may already have that covered.
I don't know if you could, because you had, had to pet Vravino, right?
Right, and primex covered the dog.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was already built into our police.
Yeah, it mine already.
You might already have it and not even know it, so, yeah.
But I know that a lot of the expense for the police dog was, was through drug money, correct?
As far as the initial to get it, yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought. But because the care was pretty much, I know Nori's vet, and, yeah, the local, yeah, okay. That's what I thought.
So I won't have drug money?
Claire, huh, drug money?
I hope you guys know Claire. No, I'm just kidding. Can't talk about that.
And Claire can kind of, you know, she's been kind of working through this for a couple of months now. And it's been about seven years. Oh, it's been seven years to get this moving forward.
Okay.
Like I said, she kind of got pushed in my direction by Lieutenant Landure.
And, and like, really, it's, sounds kind of silly, but some of the training is actually gonna be going to the elementary school. Like we did kindergarten, we did breakfast with the kindergarten nurse. And the, the whole premise was she couldn't go up and beg the dog kids for food, and they couldn't feed her. But we use it as an education tool, too, for like kids saying, okay, if a dog's got a vest on, you don't just walk up. You ask, or, you know, stuff like that. So Concord has Halloween Howl. It's a couple of days for Halloween. We shut down Main Street. Like thousands of people show up on Main Street. So Liberty was a puppy. That was her very first training, because we were getting kids out of the way, and we're getting costumes out of the way. Because, you know, that's part of the, part of the thing. If you're gonna go to the school, they might have costumes one day. So the, so it, the training is.
Social.
It's social, and you can have so much fun with it. Yeah, 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 yeah.
So, and to answer your question then, too, the.
What was the question?
To continue your conversation about time, extra time on this.
Yes.
I go to schools all the time. I do the fire drills with, with the shifts. I don't do the inspections with the shifts. I'm there all the time. Truck or Treat I go to.
Yeah.
Christmas marshmallow thing I go to. So I go to these events on my time off.
Sure. So now you just have the dog.
Yeah.
I'm not concerned about our events. I'm talking about skills like he wants to.
Yeah, so, so we get called a lot. Yeah, so we, they just did a documentary at the Fire Academy last week, the PTSD nine-eleven thing, and they called us because they knew that this, this documentary can be triggering for people who have, in the past. It was a big training in New Hampshire. So we, it's special events like that that we might go to. Also, like Battle of the Badges is coming up, the hockey game, and, and we always get called and say, hey, can you see some dogs? And I go there on my own time. I don't charge the PD for going down to Battle of the Badges, because I bring Liberty, she meets everybody in the foyer, and then we go sit and we watch the, the hockey game. So it's, it's, yeah.
Combination thereof.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just interjecting and stopping, because Claire had something to say.
Well, thank you for having us today. Really, it's been a long journey for me, because I never really thought I'd be talking about a comfort dog in Belmont, because somehow Belmont is always in my, you know, front mirror. And it goes really back to the connection I made with Evan Landure, and that was in twenty-eleven. I had been in insurance for my career, but when in my career, I was looking at maybe doing something a little bit less.
Stressful.
Going out, that sort of thing. So I, I got hired at National Press Kit, and I wanted to be in the marketing side. And marketing put me right in front of the WOW trail, you know, when it started, OBG. Anyway, that, that recreational trail was one point three miles. And the WOW board, who had been established for some ten years, was doing a WOW fest in, in, for a like a five K to raise money for the, for the trail. And then they were doing a WOW ball. Both of them were annual, one in September, one in May. So when I'm, I read my normal paper in Laconia, at the time, Evening Citizen, there's a front picture that says Bow Wow Walk. And, and it was a lady that I insured, and her dog was going to the same daycare as my dog. It's like wow, bow wow. So I approached the board, because they had asked me to be on the board. And I said, what do you think about a Bow Wow Walk? And that would be my link to Evan and Adam Steenbrock and, and all the canine officers in the, in the area. Because a Bow Wow, to me, was like a mini Westminster. It would be to bring, bring the dogs and their owners.
It would be to bring, bring the dogs and their owners in on, on, on a trail that's brand new. Everybody can introduce people that have the great thing, how the shepherds are all like, oh, I didn't know you had this, you know, you, you, you just talk about your dog. And I did it for five years, and the fifth year, by coincidence, there's a dog on Good Morning America walking down Fifth Avenue, and he's huge. And he comes from New Hampshire, and he's, he's called the Hulk. And he's a massive pit bull, and he lives with a Chihuahua and a three-year-old dog. And he, and he's, you know, very unusual looking. So, I find out how to get ahold of these people, I, I get them to come to my event. And they, they raised thirty-seven hundred and fifty dollars for the Belmont Vito and Adam and Guilfrid's Up Dog Ike. And I remember Belmont saying, well, we, what are we gonna do, we can't just put it in our cash register. So, we did open up some kind of, you know, I don't know if it was a nonprofit or something, but it was seventeen hundred and fifty dollars in, in the May of twenty fifteen that went directly to the town of Belmont for the care of Vito. So, when I retired, which was just four months later, I decided I, I have a story to say. And I'm gonna write my story, but I've gotta get different about it, can't be just a memoir of like, wham, 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 about my life. Let, let's get a graduate degree in creative writing and let me bring all my pets into it, so that each one is gonna say what they think about what I'm going through, whether it's, it's been bad or been different, they've got a personality. And what's kind of eerie is I ended up in the police station in Belmont, it was with Sean Picardi's dad, Mike. And then it's part of my story that's in there, is that he was always coming, Belmont just keeps always coming into my life. So, this book had done and published last October, and I said, I don't want any money, it's right there on the back of my cover. I, I thought working dogs were all that they were, but I also opened up comfort dogs. And that's what I want, I, I, so, so far, two, two thousand dollars in sales, and I've been doing that since October, I'm going into all the libraries. Uh, hopefully that will help me, I had a great book launch, I've been on, um, I was at the Taylor Community. And Adam Drappel, who I've been very close to now for over ten, fifteen years, he had a whole, some page, uh, story on me to say that, you know, even though I'm a local author and all, I don't want the money, I wanted to go to a, a department. And when Evan ever said to me, I think you ought to go see Deb, she loves dogs. And then, in the, in the summer of last year, I met in Bristol, looking at the newest working dog, it's a blackhound. And I'm there just to be introduced to the blackhound, because I had supported their previous dog when Drappel, their expenses took place. And then I see a, a Dalmatian puppy, it's like a Dalmatian, it was, ah, so cute. I go over, they tell me they wanna make it a comfort dog. I said, I'm happy with that, and he was the fire chief in, like, he used to be the fire chief in Littleton, uh, Mike McClellan, just an amazing man. He spoke to, to Deb, he says, you know, fire chiefs don't usually, or fire departments don't often see people unless they're in a crisis. So, he said, what a director make, and Littleton, what a director's making now with this little, this is the second puppy that he's having. And her, her name is Fiat, which is actually Italian for little flame. So, he's been helping me along and, and trying to get the word out. And so, in the last few months, it's been really about fire departments. But my cousin, uh, Lieutenant Poppy in Concord, in Laconia says, we want one, but we can't have one, because of the union having an issue, whatever. So, I'm hoping that we will be, given everything that you've heard today. I don't know that I can imagine a more perfect situation where somebody who loves dogs, has trained dogs, has got the benefit of doggone training, who, who can, you know, bring all certifications that anybody can have, and I'm gonna come at the cost of that dog.
And where is this dog coming from, do we know?
We've got a couple different places, there is a place, um, over by Keene, uh, Boonsfield Labs. And this woman specifically breeds them for comfort, um.
Well, it's emergency responders.
Yeah, emergency responders, she doesn't breed them to just, usually for the most part, to any household person.
Whole topic.
Um, there's another, like, he got his dog for hero pups. The difference with hero pups is that they train the dog and then at some point in time, the dog comes to you and it's about a year process. And I'm someone that, and, and that's a great option. However, I, I like to learn my dog. Every dog I've trained, I know they're little clerks, I know what to watch for. You know, even a dog as mellow as this, at some point, you need to know that, you know what, it's.
Oh, they still have its own personality, even when they're mellow.
Yeah.
She's so mellow, right, and it's, you know, kind of sleeping, but you kind of can, you know, I'm sure Lenny can look at her and say, you know what, it's time for us to get out of this situation.
Yeah, yeah.
And she needs a break.
Yeah, yeah.
That's where I wanna, you know, I wanna start from a dog, as a, a small pup, a puppy or whatever. Um, and it's just great that Doggone It would assist in that, yeah.
And the key is testing them when they're little.
Oh, of course.
The key is testing them when they're little and, 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 um, we had that conversation already today, and she does that and she specializes in that. We've actually worked together, because a, a little boy in one of the Concord schools invited us to his Make-A-Wish, and his Make-A-Wish was to get a, a dog, a service dog for himself, he's handicapped.
Yeah.
And this was his trainer, that trainer for the dog, so, yeah.
Nice, awesome, huh, good. Any questions, guys? Yes?
So, I totally support the dog, I think, even when we have staff who come to town halls, because all of our moves were happening. I, I think the idea's great, my only concern, and Ruth had to mention, and as the chief has mentioned, you are looking to retire sooner probably than later. I know it's not on paper, but when your retirement date is, is now the right time for Belmont, given what would go into this dog, the time, the money, the effort, when you could leave in a year or so? I would hate to have that taken away from the residents' experience or the employees. Concord is way bigger than Belmont to be able to hire this gentleman part-time to do the same thing. Uh, I don't know whether we would be able to do that in the future to hire you as a part-time employee to continue that. I'm sure you don't have to come to town hall every day to, to visit us, even though we would welcome it. So, I guess that's kind of my point, is is now the right time?
True.
And then, um, do we even know if you were the person who would take your position as chief, would want to do the same thing in the future?
I mean, we could, we could sit and what if, anything, with this whole thing. You know, I could retire tomorrow, whatever, we all know, I've got my time, my age, and so on. But I think working forward and being able to do this, I, you know, I, sure, I could retire, I could, could, you know, go away, start sitting in the RV every day. But I still come to work every day and I still enjoy this job. Yes, in the very beginning, I said one-year contract, with two years, go from there to see where things are at. Because we walked into this whole thing, everybody was kind of all wishy-washy about everything and pretty negative about it. So, I really wanted to figure out where we were going with that. And I think, for the most part, everything's kind of gone, status quo and it's gotten better. Do we not agree? So, I think things have been moving forward and yes, I would like to continue this and work with a service dog. And see where it goes. I mean, I could get hit by a bus tomorrow, you know what I mean?
I know.
You guys gotta walk back to town hall. So, it's like I said, you can what if anything, whether someone's retiring, whether someone drops dead, whether something, so.
Well, you know, and, and I know, um, I mean, we've all retired, almost have retired, and, um, and, no, I know.
Wait a minute.
I said most, I said most of us, the majority has retired. And I don't think you'll find any of us sitting at home eating bonbons in a chair, okay? I mean, we're all very busy and we have.
If I know, same job, I, I, even if I part-time job, it's a paramedic.
Sure.
Because it's all I know, I can't wipe nails.
Right.
No idea, so, this is all I know. So, I mean, even if you wanna look deeper into my budget, we could sit and go, well, we have a call for it. I have no call firefighters, so I could be part of that, if that was the case. But let's not retire me today.
No, we won't.
Let's move forward and.
Gonna be forward-thinking, do you have the support of the union?
Uh, I haven't even talked to them about it yet. So, the only reason Laconia with their union is because they have a firefighter do it.
Right, that's what I figured, if it was a firefighter that was doing it, then it would have to be the union, yeah.
And, and you know what, they love the fact that Becky Burke's your dog tour, and actually, he had, um.
Yeah, they were hanging out.
Lenny had.
We got pictures, didn't we?
Yeah, Lenny had, uh, Liberty and I today and the two of them were just chilling together.
Yeah.
So, um, and as far, the, the guys like having the dog in front of their house, they love it. And, um, you know, so as far as the union saying yea or nay.
It really doesn't matter, right.
It's not a deal with the union.
It's only giving to them, and it's not changing.
But they don't always see it that way.
You know, and you know what, they've got other problems you can be concerned about, so it will make or break their day.
Alright.
So, what do we, what do we need, a motion for this, if we're gonna bowl on this?
I have two questions, did you?
I can't hear.
Sharon.
I, I couldn't hear.
Oh, oh, sorry, um, did you have a conversation with Mike Terci about the dog?
No.
No, okay. And what is your second-in-command feel, how does he feel?
What do you think?
Okay, you sure?
And it's like I said, I, I've, I've been to talk to the captain, I did talk to the team about this, um, I haven't really talked to you about it, but you're leaving.
I have six dogs, I don't need none.
Yeah, he's got a whole, he's got a whole tribe of them.
We had a good rapport with the police department anyways, and that's why I asked, um, Lieutenant, will you be here?
Yeah.
He wrote a letter about this.
Yeah.
I figured the captain would be here plenty anyways, if you guys have any questions for him and his folks on this. But I think we.
Well, I know, I think that they're kind of actively, um, working to find a new dog officer, for lack of what else you call that particular, you know. But, and it takes, it takes a certain person to take this on, whether it's the comfort or the police dog, I mean, it's, it is a commitment.
So, in this situation, with Evan wanting to, or meeting, another working canine or police canine, however you wanna call it, and the town also benefiting from a comfort dog, why not put these two departments together in that situation and work together with it? And I work with the cops all the time, I, I, you know, detectives need me, I come up for them, we all work together in this town, so.
And if it's a nonprofit, we put the two chiefs or their appointees appoint a nonprofit, keeps them together.
Sure, sure.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to move forward and get, get a dog.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Harry, none, move forward and obviously, um, Alicia can double-check on the insurance question, which we may probably already have, I'm not sure. But we wanna, we wanna make sure we have that in place, and I guess you just need to go out and do a little, um, legwork as far as, um.
So, it's kind of just slowly, you know, start with the.
Well, and I think the other thing is, is, is again, okay, is if the word gets out, obviously, we need to come up with a nonprofit, you know, that you might be surprised, the donation part of it too.
And they, and some of the other things too, like, when you do that, is they, uh, Liberty got her name from a, from a little girl who came in the police department and said, you should name your dog Liberty, and we're like, wow, that's it. But there are other, like Manchester had a, had a contest, Goffstown had a contest, they run a dog, and you can do the contest at the school, you can do it, you can do it statewide, you're gonna bring people to your, your nonprofit website and stuff like that, so. And the other piece I wanted to, really, really quick, is they, the state senate has a committee, a subcommittee on PTSD. And, uh, most of the dogs, like I said, that work down south are, are part of the PTSD decision thing. So, the senate has asked us to come up with a standard, so we're gonna be the first state with a comfort dog standard. And there's a couple of states waiting for us to do this, cuz they wanna jump on board too. Justin Breton is writing the standard, he's the, uh, mental health and wellness officer at Manchester PD. Senator Burtzell, Burtzell, I think, is a big, a big one on this thing, and so. But the standard, right now, I can tell you that the farthest it's going is that, obviously, a dog has to have some kind of insurance, because God forbid something happens. And they get their, um, therapy dog certification and the AKC has a certification called, uh, K nine, K nine good citizen. And they're, they're, it's not that hard, all the dogs right now, um, they can't test until they're a year old, so, but that, that would be the, the standard. So, it's nothing that anybody that's already done this is not gonna be able to, to do, or that, and that's what everybody does right now, anyway, so.
Well, and it's a case where there, obviously, everyone that has comfort dogs, they all band together and help.
Um, do you have something?
Uh, no, I just, I wanna speak in favor of this, I, I think critical, uh, stress debriefing is extremely important. PTSD in the police department and the fire department is there all the time with all the guys. You know, all, all members, there is, is not anything that goes on there that it doesn't bother you. And it's, and the problem is it, it keeps building and building and building, so you stop losing people because they can't take it anymore. And programs like this is gonna help retain people and keep this in, uh, you know, throughout this. Same thing with, you know, critical incidents that happen in schools, uh, it is like a great thing to have done to be able to, you know, get in there with the kids, that it's not gonna be affecting, you know, them, and, and, and they can get stuff out there. Uh, you know, chief, you know how much, the, the field stress in the departments, that the officers, if you don't, if, if anything, same thing with, uh, you know, chief. Fire department with the, you know, we deal with people that are dying all the time, tragic accidents and so forth. It's very important to advocate getting this, you know, in, into the system like this, where they can get that, so people can talk. And the dog will help people listen up and talk.
Yeah, yeah, it's funny how many times we've been to the statehouse and testified, Liberty gets called there a lot, so it's, it's, yeah, yeah, so.
I think I do miss if I didn't say the name of my book.
I was gonna ask that too.
It's called Saving Mama, by Claire Kevert Dow. And if you look it up on Amazon, you'll, you'll see some reviews. And I'm also in like, in free bookstore, I actually was the top book seller in Laconia's industry for the year twenty twenty-four. So, that was exciting for me, and, you know, um, it's in Gibson's as well, out in Concord.
I just wanna thank Claire and Doggone It for this part of this.
Yeah, thank you so much for coming, yes. Yes.
I just wanna say that it's an amazing opportunity, it really is, with the amount of mental health that, oh, well, the amount of right now. And not only on an adult level, but on a kid level and the educational system. So, being able to get the opportunity to stand a little bit, you know, and they.
Well, I think as we've talked about, is that there's such a void, you know, it's, it's, you know, people go for help, but there's, when they are, walk out the door, there's that empty space.
Yeah, and walls start closing in.
And the walls start closing in, yeah.
You know, and these guys are, you know, when it comes to that, it's non-shocked, I mean, you know, well, they're probably fifty percent of the dogs out there are more than, you know, somebody bam, and then somebody, you know, they get distracted from a people.
Yeah, we went to a couple of house fires in Concord, and honestly, I'm lucky, you're not probably gonna be able to do this part, but I was lucky. I, the kids are watching their house burn now, and we walked over and we hung out with the kids and totally, I don't wanna say it took their mind completely away from what was going on, but we were playing and, you know, poor mom and dad, but mom and dad came to the dog too eventually and, and, and stuff like that, so. But it, it, it makes such a difference, you'll lose your identity, because everywhere you go, they wanna know where the dog is, not you anymore. You know what I'm saying? It, it's, it's like, we've, we've been to the state prison, and like I said, the state prison now has dogs. Because we were in the state prison a couple of times, they had an officer die of a heart attack, um, and so on, so it's, it's, um, yeah, it's game-changing.
Awesome, awesome.
Lenny's talked about doing, and just kind of answered on Alicia's thing of being, my dedication's to the town.
Yes, 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 oh, yeah.
So, that's really what my whole push for this is. Yes, if somebody needs something at another time, by all means, I'd be there to assist them. My dedication is for right here, for this town, and to help, you know, your office, town office people, um, police department, schools, of course, the fire department, and even highway, I've come to the.
I mean, we bring the, we got people ridden on the school buses in the morning a couple of times. We've got calls from the school bus, they were, hey, can you ride on the bus for a couple of days with a dog?
Well, we hand out pencils.
Yeah, so it's, it's, yeah, yeah.
We started that, to my knowledge, we started it, the elementary students, so why not have myself there now with a dog? Because I've gone to hand out with Lieutenant, you know, pencils.
I think the police department did, uh, to take the.
Well, they did that, because I don't have started, but I, you know, when I came here.
I think the chief was out there for a year.
Yeah, and, and when I came here, I started doing a little.
So, now it's over.
But anyways, well, I appreciate your support.
Alright, alright, keep us posted.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you everyone for coming, thank you. I know everyone's busy, so.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Oh, yeah.
Or my German Shepherd?
I know, I have a young man, there's a young man that's come, that comes to the house once a week for a riding lesson. And he has autism, and like, it's so interesting how this one-hundred-foot horse just gravitates to you. So, dogs make people happy, I mean, just sitting here watching Colleen's face was. Like, Colleen wants the dog. Hey, guys, back to business, unfortunately. Annual, annual report on print bidding results.
Yes, uh, this year, I took the annual report out to bid, uh, I provided you with the four bidders, um, that bid. Um, we're gonna go with Warp Industries, who was the lowest bidder, um, in the last two or three years. We've gone with, um, our, Brock Shaw, Ray Shaw, um, so this year, we'll go ahead, the lowest bidder saved the town some money and tried a new company. Um, they did drop off some samples, and the woman who will solely be working on the Belmont project is also a Belmont resident, so she can kinda take it on personally.
Nice, nice. Okay, awesome, all right.
Cool, cool.
Um, US P A P review for D R A.
Uh, yes, I put it in your packets, I have the full report if you want to read it, uh, but this just basically says that the Department of Revenue has reviewed, and it's called uh Use Cap, which stands for Uniform Standards of Professional Acquisition Practice. This is basically a very gigantic book that K R T puts together on how they did our appraisal, and then it gets shipped off to D R A, they read it review, and they either say, yes, you performed your review per the standards, or no, you did not, and they, um, they pass the review, um, and have done it, um, for the twenty four tax year.
Yep, 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 twenty twenty four tax year.
And it says there, uh, Use Cap, Department of Review complies with all requirements set forth in standard six of the Use Cap, and app, applicable laws and regulations, so if anyone has any questions about that?
Nope, can't argue with D R A as much as we sometimes would like to.
Right.
Awesome, okay. Okay, P D retirement intention letter.
We've known, um, for probably the beginning of twenty four, that, um, Sergeant David Sweets was going to retire, and he has officially submitted his, um, intention of retirement, so his last day of full-time employment will be Friday, February twenty eighth. Um, I don't know if the chief or captain wants to touch on his plans for afterwards.
So, we've, uh, we're still in the process of trying to fill his position, um, we, we've done one round of interviews, and we're going to continue looking at this point.
That answers that question.
Yes.
And then his intention to come back, uh, because he has to take a summer.
Yeah, he has.
Right, I said take a month, it's another.
It's, I think it's twenty eight days, and then he can come back part-time, um, and he's, he's willing to do that to help out with preparation of paperwork for court and discovery and things like that.
And train the new person.
He doesn't wanna, he doesn't wanna go to court?
No.
No, huh, can't blame him, but, okay.
Yep.
Um, so, in the interim, well, I mean, it's already, you know, even if you found somebody at this point, they'd probably have to give notice where they are, so, who's?
So, between myself and the lieutenant, whoever's.
You're gonna be in court?
Yep, yep.
Okay, all right.
So.
So, so you did your first round of interviews, and, and obviously now you need to re-advertise?
Yep, and we, uh, I know New Hampshire Municipal put it back up yesterday to, to advertise that, so.
Okay.
Yep, we do have a couple that are maybe interested, but nothing official.
Okay, all right.
While you were there, and then you had some item under new business, can you just go ahead while you're there?
Yeah, so, um, we are looking to hire, um, a certified police officer, um, who has about sixteen years on. Um, he's, he's looking to come on, hopefully, in two weeks, if the board is, um, willing to let us hire. Um, he's, he's a former, um, canine officer, um, he has a canine right now that is only four and a half years old. So, our hope is that he can go back to training with that dog to have it, you know, back in service.
So, it's his dog?
Yes.
Um, so if he, okay, now my brain's dying.
You're thinking, thinking.
Yeah, so if the dog, so if the dog is his dog, and, and you're hoping that, obviously, the dog must, probably has to do some training to get his certifications back up, does that mean he now becomes the town of Belmont's dog for insurance purposes?
I think on paper, it needs to be that, yes, I think we'd have to talk to Primex to make sure that everything's good on that end.
Right, because obviously, if it becomes the town's dog, he's going to have the dog, but we have to own it, I think, insurance-wise, and then if the dog retires, he can have the dog, you know, it would be his dog anyways, so it's just.
The dog initially was the city of Belmont.
Was it?
He worked there.
Okay.
And they haven't asked for it back, so.
No. Okay, all right, I guess we won't touch that.
We take that off the record.
We'll just leave that alone, okay, awesome.
And also, I was looking to see about putting on a part-time dispatcher.
Okay.
Um, we, we do have one applicant that, uh, has applied for a part-time dispatch, so, um, she currently has, um, about twenty-four years of experience dispatching. Um, is a current dispatcher, part-time, at another department, um, and we're looking to bring her on for, uh, some relief, so.
All right.
And stupid question, but I gotta ask anyways, you have all those positions open in your budget?
Say that again?
They're all open in your budget, those positions, not new, new positions?
Correct.
Thank you.
Correct, yep, yep, so, and we're still looking.
Just gonna ask a stupid question, so it's on the record.
We could have, we could have four or five more.
I know.
It'd be not four more, we could use four more.
Just wanted on the paperwork.
And just to bring everybody up to speed, we do have two other people that have applied for full-time positions, one's certified, one's not certified. Um, we also have one, uh, who's applied for part-time work as well. So, once their backgrounds are done, I will come back to see if we're good to go to hire those folks.
Even more of a reason why everything needs to pass in March.
Yes.
Absolutely.
People just don't understand, we need to get the budget, we need to get everything passed in March.
Absolutely.
Awesome, good, all right, good stuff.
Um.
Any other new business?
Are you, sorry, are you asking permission to hire this person, and do we have the name?
Yes, I do.
Uh, Joe Guerrero is his name.
And what, do you want, do we do want a dispatcher, just the officer?
No, he's an officer, right? Oh, do you wanna do the dispatch too?
With the dog, right?
Yes.
You wanna include the dog in the motion also, right?
Yeah.
If possible, yeah, with air quotes.
Okay, so, I'll make a motion that we give.
Joe Guerrero.
Thank you, and, and the dog?
Yes.
You, uh, do you know the dog's name?
Falcon.
Fel?
Falcon.
Falcon.
Um.
Falcon.
Okay, our approval for a full-time hire, I assume he's coming on as a?
Patrol officer.
Patrol officer.
Yep.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Hearing none. Do we need to deal with the dispatcher? We don't need to at this point.
As long as you approve me to, to do that, it's on our part-time line item, so I don't.
I don't think we have to, okay, all right, very good, okay, all right. Got any opposition here? Um, do we have any other new business?
Um, yes, Craig has an item to, uh, request.
Oh, yes, Craig, come to this, come to the chair. Yep.
So, unfortunately, last week, um, we, um, had a couple major breakdowns in the lower right trucks, so we've been running, we've been running three instead of five.
With two storms coming.
Big one, big one.
Well, I've followed a lot of these, last couple have been pretty fine. So, I, one truck down in Manchester, um, two thousand fifteen, I, because I have a bad vector, um, so they, we had to send it to Mac, because they have the correct tools to adjust the valve body and do all that kinda stuff, and even like, even like, no, no one has the tools around here. You really have no choice but to send that to the dealer, had trust me, stole the truck down, so you don't wanna chance doing any damage to the motor by running it down.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I'm expecting that back, hopefully tomorrow, um, the bill for that's, the estimate was between four and eight thousand dollars.
Say again?
The estimate for that was between four and eight thousand dollars.
Okay.
So, it looks like it's gonna be on the low side of the estimate, um, and I'm gonna be, um, taking that out of line, um, line item seven oh eight, and the heavy equipment item, uh, that, that, I, that line item, I budget twenty-six thousand dollars a year for. Um, so, between that, yet, I've already, I've already had some pretty good hits on that budget area this year. Um, our other truck is a late screeching truck, um, that had, um, it needs, needed an E G R cooler, um, so basically, I have to take the motor basically at all apart, half side, half side of the engine. Um, this is what this coo mission stopped, this is, it, the truck's a two thousand twelve, it's got nothing to do with make, it's got nothing to do with it, just, they make these things to fail. Um, that's just what it's all about.
Here every day, that's why the used equipment auctions are so good lately.
Yep, and, yeah, so, anyway, um, so, Jer, Jeremiah there's great, he, um, he got the truck there, and, uh, he put it right in the garage, hopefully, that may be done in the next couple of days, but, um, he's discovered there's some other problems, um, cracked intake, um, so. Hopefully, we'll have that back, the bill's gonna be about sixteen thousand dollars, so I'd like to take that out of capital. I, my, I don't budget it after every year, I've been very fortunate that I've never gone over that line on plan, but this is just, this is just a hit that my budget can't, and I don't wanna leave five or six thousand dollars for equipment repair for the rest of the year, so, we have capital, that's what I had it for, and I've used it for that, but I'm just requesting that I be able to take one of those, one of those bills out of my capital, and, um, hopefully, we'll get it all back together and run into those forms.
Do we know what's in the capital just for us?
Hundred eighty-six thousand dollars.
Thank you.
I think that.
That's before this year, so.
Yeah.
I'm gonna take the cost of the pickup truck that we're gonna buy out, which is seventy-four, I'll take sixty out of that, it'll still leave us a good balance, but, um, yeah, I think, I think it's just a smart thing to do, and so I don't, so I don't go over that line.
Okay, um, I'll make a motion that we allow Craig to take out, um, the funds to, um, repair the two thousand twelve.
International.
International truck.
And the Mac up.
Oh, and the Mac, you wanna include the Mac also?
You wanna take a book?
No, I, I think, I think if, if the bill is what they're saying, the estimate is about four, forty-two hundred dollars.
You have enough in that at the moment.
I think I can still take that out, still manage it, if something else happens during.
We might have to do.
We can revisit it, but I think, but I think I can just, I think they just take that larger bill off that and.
Okay.
Does the motion have to have the dollar in it, just so we are clear?
No.
Or you can just say you've promoted them to, um, Use Capital Reserve.
For the repair of the two thousand twelve international, that way, if they find something else, you know.
I wanna make sure we're clear upon the motion.
We've covered everything, okay, do I have a second for that?
I'll second, or Sharon again, that's fine.
Sharon, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, okay?
I just ask everybody to be patient the next couple of storms, we're close to getting all the big ones, so we're, we're down a couple of guys, actually, three guys. We'll put all hands on deck, and it is what it is, we'll make it happen.
Does everybody stay home?
I wish you could.
Well, you get a, you get applause now, so you can go, go to work.
When you have nine and you're down three.
Yeah, it's a big hill, yep, that's for sure. All right, um, any other new business?
Thank you guys.
No, any other old business?
Um, yes, I have provided you, um, the draft of your slutton's letter for the annual report, if you would like to review that, and or give me any comments or suggestions, or that goes to prints, um, that would be wonderful. And then, um, I also provided you, um, John has asked, uh, a few times, that we should, um, cut a copy of a tax bill in the newspaper and kinda show where the breakdown of your tax bill goes to, so, I've kinda drafted, it's also in the new, uh, it's in the voters guide.
Voters guide.
Uh, if you guys like how I interpreted John's, uh, message.
Yes, you did.
I took, um, someone volunteered their, uh, tax bill, so I did block out their name just for privacy, but I thought it was an average, um, average home, average bill, uh, and it just says, you know, while each property tax payment is made as a single check to the town, the town acts as a pass-through, the town is obligated to make all the outgoing payments for the Shaker Regional School District, the Belmont County, Belmont County, and the State of New Hampshire. And I listed out, you know, we caught a check for thirteen point five million to Shaker, one point four to the state of, uh, the State of New Hampshire Department Head, and one point three to Belmont County, and although we collected twenty-three point three million in taxes, the town only retains seven of that, seven million of that, so. Paints the picture for those who are more.
The school's gonna love that one.
So, is this going to go in as, are we going to put this in as an, to the, letter to the editor, or is this going in?
With a photo, it probably can't, so probably it's going as an editorial or something, yeah.
I would do a paid ad, yep.
We have an important school meeting coming up.
Thursday night.
I won't be able to make it, 'cause the storm coming in, so Sharon, can you help me out?
I want a hundred of these printed up.
How am I gonna help you out? If I, if it's snowing, I can't go.
Do you think how many people will show up?
I'm, a hundred won't cost us a lot of money and a lot of time, and I'll stand outside and hand them out.
Well, um.
They don't know, they really don't know.
I doubt, well, I, again, I guess you can look at it two ways, um, they do have a, I was gonna say rain date, they do have a snow date for Saturday.
Do they? Okay, good, let's, storm's coming Saturday too tomorrow.
And that's later on Saturday, I think, later on Saturday into Sunday, I think, if the weatherman are right. So, it's a question whether they'll even hold that meeting, but then they might hold the meeting, just because, yes.
I would suggest, my recommendation as far as the timeline of the storm, is we contact Mr. Tercy, and we, and we try to get them to reschedule it for Saturday.
Well, I was going to.
About the roads in and out of there.
I was gonna do that this afternoon, I have to go to the school, so I was gonna go have a conversation with him and say, what are the chances that we cannot do it on Thursday? Well, and I think you can definitely say, we're down two trucks, we're down three guys in the highway department, so it may not be the best.
Jen, is there a specific timeline that they have to cancel and reschedule with State of New Hampshire? I think there is, isn't there?
For their deliberative session?
Uh, I don't remember. I remember Alice saying, it's too late, we're having it, rain or shine, snow or shine.
Um, for the deliberative?
Yeah.
I know that they have to have, I know they, they have a snow date. Yes. And they can't, they're, they have to have it Saturday, no matter what the weather is, that I do know, but I don't know if there's, uh, so many hours.
There might be a notification period, but.
Uh, please don't ask them, they won't know.
I'll probably get it as soon as I get back to the office.
Nah, I think that message coming from one of the selectmen and D P W would be good for him to hear that we're not possibly gonna have the roads cleared.
So, you can call, can you, would you call him also?
Sure, I'll call him out, of course.
Yeah, and let him know that, you know.
That's the way to do it.
It might be in his best interest.
Put it on speakerphone?
No, that's okay, yeah, no, we won't do the speakerphone, this is a selectman's thing. It might be in his best interest, uh, moving to, move it to Saturday, I don't know, yeah, yeah.
We should put a couple of these in the hallway by the outside of your office, 'cause a good friend of mine that had your job for a good number of years, that, the beating up that you, the people take at that window for the taxes, when they come in and wanna complain, this is where the money goes.
Sure.
That's, that's a good, especially if it's colored too, and it shows up.
Well, I think since.
What?
To the school, seriously, um, I do believe that there's an awful lot of conversation right now of how school funding's going, and I think we're gonna see a lot of different, um, potential bills, if I was following things correctly. And, uh, I know some of the state aid that was removed has now been reintroduced, uh, so.
I wonder if the state aid though.
Seven thousand, no, no, it's a huge part, it is a huge part of that, um, of unfortunately, their funding, and what we end up paying for because of the state's follow-up, I mean, that, this is seriously.
So, are you saying that the, the one point four million, or let's just round off, the one point five million that we now send to, to Concord, to the Department of Education, we're gonna receive more back?
So, they overturned last year's adequate funding education, which they said was too low, it was only like seven thousand dollars per pupil, and they're saying it needs to be more, like ten almost, so, that's what they're still fighting over, and they're gonna hopefully figure out this year?
I think actually, it was four thousand.
Oh, was it four, and they want seven?
It was just that low, and it went to seven thousand.
Yeah, and they're still saying it needs to be more.
And I think that's why we're, I mean, the school has always been more, there's always been a, always conversation about their rights, however, and their defense, and, you know, what's fair is fair, is they have been stripped a lot of money, which obviously, we're gonna pay, it's the trickle down to them.
Oh, of course, not a lot.
Now, how you look at it, till the State of New Hampshire learns how to fund education, we're, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna pay for it, and we're.
Well, something that we need to keep an eye on too, is this government, mostly the governor, wants to take eight hundred million out of the state budget, which is gonna trickle down to us at some point that we have to handle.
Mm-hmm.
Right. And along with the education freedom, you know, the, the monies that are really impacting our schools, that no one really has a clear understanding of how that really works, they just think, oh, people can take their twelve thousand dollars and go to a charter or private school, and that, we, as a school district, and I'll say that, 'cause it is all ours, are paying for it.
Paying for that.
Yeah, like phases out over four years, the state.
A large portion of that, that is still in the budget, so if you pull forty kids out of the schools, you know, out of the, the Shaker Regional School system, it's not enough to cut teachers, it's not, you're spreading that, that amount over, you know, four schools. And so, the impacts of that, that everybody thought was so great, that they could take their children and bring them where they wanted.
It's just, it's reducing the class sizes, but it's not eliminating the class, the teacher is still. The teacher is still there, it's just reducing the class sizes, not, some classes, yes.
You know, and that's, and that's.
But then, and then with your classes, you might, the problem is you have that waving, you know, you might have, one year have ten in one class and twenty in another. But that wave continues on right through. Twelfth grade, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But who knew that we'd give, one point, when you think of education, and we have a gambling system in this state that was, that was gonna save every small town. It's for school, the money, we're, we're gonna rake in the money, and that has grown and grown and grown. But here we are writing a check back to them for just under one point five million dollars, one point four eight, I mean, I, I didn't know that.
Well, I think the other problem is that the, the lottery was great, but, but then you just keep hearing that the, um, the hierarchy in the lottery. Or that's, they're making good money right now, and.
Well, they built a new building, it's got eighty-six offices with fifteen people working in it.
Well, and John, I think that there's an awful lot of individuals, and, and I feel confident saying this. That really don't understand that portion that goes back, and why it goes back. I, I really do think that people.
I'm one of them, I agree with you, I'm one of them.
And I don't know how you educate individuals that can then have some sort of.
But I, I think Alicia's idea here was a good one, I mean, we're not, we're not certainly, we're not picking on Mr. Tracy, we're just saying, here's the money. That we took in, and this is where it goes.
Well, and we all know, we've been advocating this for years, is most people don't understand, we have no control over the school. They think if they cut the town portion of the budget down to nothing, that their tax bills are gonna be saved. It isn't, because what happens is, we cut ours down, and we go without police officers and, and firemen and highway guys. And the school keeps going up, so it doesn't, you know, it's, it's not a good.
And they spend money, they're gonna spend five hundred thousand dollars redoing a parking lot, I understand, at the high school, what's wrong with the parking lot? Nothing.
Well, if we don't, if we don't put money into our roads, if we don't put money into our roads, the school buses aren't gonna be able to get to the parking lot, okay? To drop the kids off, I mean, it just, it's.
But they got that money in cash, they're not borrowing it, they're not bonding it.
Well, and point to the whole thing is like people, I've heard people this year say, you know, my taxes went up this year, we were defaulted. It's not us that's hurting the tax bill as bad as people thought.
Yeah, no.
Just an update, I, I just talked to Mr. Tracy. And, um, he thanked me very much for calling, we were actually just talking, and they were considering calling me. And, uh, I recommended that they, they change the date to Saturday, and he seemed like he was in full agreement, so. Tended it with they're gonna change it to Saturday.
Kind of clock.
It'll, it'll hit Facebook and it'll hit their website and whatever.
There may not be any school tomorrow, because where, where the timeline is, with the snow coming in.
It is weird.
It's gonna get hit, we're gonna get hit, they're saying from noon to six or seven or so, so it's gonna be, and they don't do early delays, and there's no sense in starting.
Yeah.
But they may not.
Uh, I just have one more piece of information, I had, um, sent, given you guys this, um, after our last meeting. I was approached by, um, Selectman Champy here, um, as we were kind of wrapping up. All year I've given you guys the update on the default and where we stood, and, um, one of her questions was, yes, we hear you update where we are. Percentage-wise, but what does that mean? So, I asked all of the staff, all the department heads to, okay, tell me what you lost, how did the default budget affect you? So, I got responses back on Lanyu's, Building Brown's, Police, Parks and Rec, the library, Fire Department's. Um, on how their departments were affected, um, in a more, um. Exact way, uh, I'm having to read it, it's four pages long, if you want me to read it. Uh, I can touch on just a few of each of the departments. Um, I did add in our voter's guide, kind of after Article Seven, which is the operating budget. Um, to look the effects of the default line, so that people can kind of read, uh, more so how it affects, um, the town and the budget of the whole.
And I will say, five hundred, what, five hundred seventy-three thousand, we are over default of a default for our operating budget this year, that's really impressive, that was able to get that tight.
And I do wanna a- add too, that we were only that tight because, pretty much because of the police department had five vacancies unfilled. So, they had five salary not filled, five health insurances that we didn't pay for, five repayments that we have.
Nah, I mean, even this, this coming budget, we're only five hundred seventy-three thousand over the default of the default.
I thought it was a good idea, because, you know, they, she says, yeah, we're under budget, which was a really good thing, you know. But I don't want people.
There's a lot of things that didn't get done.
Right, I wanna, don't want people to go, well, you, you did it with this much, so you can keep going, without them knowing, okay, this is what you lost. So, we're out there advocating to make sure, to help get our budget passed, we can say, okay, but this is what you already didn't get. Because of that number, and it's just gonna go down from there, so.
I can read pretty fast, if you want me to touch base on it, or.
I mean, like a quick highlight would be cool.
For you guys to zip, or I can, it doesn't matter, I mean, some of it I didn't even realize, you know, and it's the little things, you know. That you don't realize that we went without or cut, or, you know, that you look at.
I wondered about the drug take-back thing, cause I didn't see anything, that was canceled, national night out. Um, obviously the pagers for the Fire Department, uh, um, you know.
Well, the big thing is all the, you know, the, going back on the, just kinda buying the vehicles, all the maintenance we couldn't do, which is killing the standard of our vehicles.
Gonna come back and haunt us, that's for sure.
Same with the roads.
Yeah, and the same with the roads, yeah.
Twelve years ago, we started saying we're gonna spend a million dollars a year, then we cut it back, three, four years ago, to seven fifty. And the price of asphalt went up, not down.
The pavilion roof needs to be replaced.
Just to give you an example, the new truck we just bought was two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. The MAC we bought in two thousand two, fully equipped with a standard plow, wing, everything was a hundred and eleven thousand. How many of those would we have bought? And that's still running. That doesn't have a, that doesn't have a.
So, did you just want to read that into the record, so it's on?
Yeah.
Go ahead, you can, you can go through and read it, and everybody can go for it.
Read it for the record. In the language department, uh, they plan on purchasing a filing cabinet, was reduced to one, uh, due to space constraint. Constraints, and keeping an eye on the budget, um, ink and supplies for the plotter printer were not purchased. And maintenance was delayed, general office supplies were carefully rationed, which is not sustainable long-term. So, support staff at planning board and zoning board meetings were reduced to minimize overtime costs. Legal services were used sparingly, and code enforcement cases were strictly reviewed before utilizing legal services. Preventative maintenance on the code enforcement vehicle was postponed, affecting its lifespan. Fuel usage was closely monitored, and, and inspections were ruled by location to reduce cost. Conservation Commission was unable to conduct invasive species mitigation, leading to uncontrolled spread. Staff morale remains stable but is declining due to concerns about another default. Building and Browns, no new truck was purchased, leaving the department with an aging vehicle that does not need operational needs. No mulch or lawn fertilizer was purchased for the town grounds, no painting was conducted unless existing supplies were available. So, if you gotta paint building, you gotta paint building. Uh, no replacement tools were purchased, leaving staff to use personal tools from home. No lift for pressure washing buildings, thus putting off maintenance needs. Police Department, National Night Out was canceled, one drug take-back event was canceled. Only one cruiser, cruiser would have been purchased, um, if we had not chosen to use ARCA funds. Instead of the Plan Three, which has been the planned rotation for many years. Difficulty in attracting candidates due to the low starting wage, the current starting wage is twenty-three eighty-five. Compared to surrounding towns offering thirty dollars or more an hour. Union contract failure for the limited recruitment efforts. Persistence staffing shortage, shortages ending the year, five officers short, including one position cut due to budget constraints. Parks and Rec, Old Home Day, fireworks were eliminated, event planning was impacted due to reduced dedicated hours. Affecting vendor participation. Parks and Rec, pavilion roof replacements postponed, no additional grass seed or fertilizer purchased. No repainting or replacement of signs out of park and beach. Programs for community service, unable to add new continuous programs, unable to provide a planned free seating programs. And programs for the community, budget constraints created hesitation in spending, reducing flexibility, and increased anxiety. Long-term, long-term concerns, no movement on establishing a municipal reserve fund, delaying much-needed town hall relocation. And facility improvements, aging park equipment and lack of funding for compliance with new RSA park regulations. Remains significant challenges. Library, limited participation and professional development opportunities, fewer museum passes available to the public. Reduced acquisition of new books and materials, delayed updates to public computers and printers. Increased administrative time spent on budget monitoring and searching for alternate funding sources. Rising costs in twenty twenty-five for the library circulation system, and downloadable books and audio. Unmet community needs for improved printing, faxing, scanning, and payments, payment services. Fire Department, training and education limited, limited due to budget restricted attendance at outside training and fire academy classes. Impacting firefighter development, pager request denied. ARCA funds request for new pages was rejected despite their critical role in emergency response. PPE, protective personal equipment shortage, budget constraint being frail enough for a one full set-up year for firefighter. Leading to mismatch in ill-fitting equipment, creating safety concerns, eating apparatus costs, maintaining cost, maintenance costs are high. Even basic services such as oil filter lint changes, costs around a thousand per vehicle, limiting funds for other necessary repairs. Overtime budget exceeded by twenty thousand. A twenty thousand budget cut and employee on late duty led to an overrun in overtime expenses. With the department exceeding the overtime by five thousand three hundred sixty dollars. Fire prevention materials were cut due to lack of budget, meant the department couldn't provide usual fire prevention materials for school visitors. Station deterioration, cracking walls, matching garage bay doors, delaying response times, and lack of funds for basic maintenance and improvements. Impacted both functionality and morale, low morale due to budget cuts, the denied request. Denied request firefighters feel defeated, and morale is at an all-time low, especially as they face another uncertain budget year.
Well, it is what it is, I guess, what else can we say? And God forbid, if we end up in the default budget, it's going to be even worse.
That's all I have, and we do have, um, quite the non-public items.
Um, is there any public comment at this point? Hearing none, I guess we have to go into non-public.
Forty-five minutes.
Ninety-one dash A colon three, Roman numeral two, letter.
C L E.
C L E, um, roll call? Ruth. Thank you, guys.